Good afternoon. I call to order the meeting of the Hamilton County Commissioners for the regular meeting of the regular meeting of April the 29th. Just a beautiful afternoon, even though it's a rainy afternoon, it's still beautiful. Good afternoon, Madam Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
And we also have with us our Clerk of the Board and our County Administrator, so I'd like to welcome them also. And we're going to start our meeting out as we often do with a silent prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance. If you take a moment for prayer, thank you. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous session.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you so much. And we have two presentations today, two proclamations. And so I intentionally wore my green, I don't know if it looks like green on the screen, because we're talking about life. We're talking about organ donations and we're also talking about Minority Health Month and purposely put the Minority Health Month with the Organ Donor Month. Because they were asking us to celebrate it on the 29th, which we are doing now. So we have some speakers that are here. And the green is for renewal, life revitalization and all of that. And that's what organ donation does. So we have three people that are with us. I think two of the people are going to speak today. I'm going to start with Dr. Shemal Shaw, who is the Chief of the Solid Organ Transplantation. If you'd like to get started, then you can introduce your other colleagues.
Madam President, this is Corey King from UC Health. Unfortunately, Dr. Shaw is actually in the OR right now. He wasn't able to make it out. So I will, on behalf of UC Health, I'm the transplant administrator. And, you know, I really appreciate, Madam President and the Board of Commissioners, the recognition that we're receiving for Donate Life Day and Donate Life Month, because to us, it's so important to recognize the fact that our organ donors are the ones that make this possible for us to save so many lives here at the transplant center. And I really appreciate this recognition, because I think that the organ donors are truly our heroes and have given the gift of life in order to save so many other people. And so I really appreciate it, Madam President and the Board of Commissioners, for this recognition.
Thank you. So are you the only one that's going to be speaking then? I know we had three people down.
So then I want to also introduce my partner in this, Barry Massa from Life Center Organ Donor Network, who's on the donation side. And I would like to introduce him to say a couple of words as well.
So, thank you again for inviting me to be part of this meeting today. And I've met a few of you, but I'm Barry Massa. I'm the Executive Director for Life Center Organ Donor Network. And again, I want to thank you for this recognition, because it really is a great way to honor all those who gave the gift of life as an organ tissue and eye donor. Currently, there are over 600 men, women and children in the greater Cincinnati area waiting for a life-saving transplant. And this is one way to raise awareness, so that more people register and people get a second chance at life. So again, thank you very much for allowing us to be part of your meeting today and everything that you do to support our life-saving mission.
Thank you so much for contacting our office to make this happen. So I'd like to just move forward and read our proclamation. I won't read all of it. We'll certainly make sure that you guys get a copy of it. Proclamation recognizing April 2021 as National Donate Life Month. Whereas while thousands of Americans receive the gift of life each year through organ transplantation, the number of people in need of life organs remains staggering high. There are more than 107,000 nationwide who are on the waiting list and another person is added every nine minutes. And whereas approximately 18 patients die each day while waiting for a donated heart, liver, kidney or other organ. And whereas the need for organ donations greatly exceeds the supply available and likely increase in the coming years. And whereas more than 1 million tissue transplants are done each year and the surgical need for tissue has been steadily rising. So I'd like to say now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County, Ohio, does hereby recognize the month of April 2021 as National Donate Life Month. And be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County, Ohio, does hereby proclaim the month of April 2021 as National Donate Life Month. And this is signed by all of our Commissioners who are strongly in support of this. And I'll open it up for my colleagues to make any comments that they'd like to make. Vice President Reese.
Thank you, Madam President. Just happy to support the proclamation and want to just say that certainly learned a lot more about organ donation through my friend Michelle Lane, who for many years was looking for a kidney transplant and was able to get one and work through her sister. But we worked through the organ donation. Folks, she volunteered with the organization. And then later, years, many years later, fortunately, she passed away and she was a organ donor as well. So got a chance to kind of see it firsthand and go through that process with her. And then, you know, again, she said, hey, I want to help someone else. So I'm just happy to support the proclamation today.
Thank you. Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. And thank you for being here and bringing this to light and to our attention. I too have a friend that received a heart transplant a number of years ago. I actually owned the front porch coffee house with five others and he was one of them, Sean Tierney. He's a teacher and a coach, volleyball coach over at Elder High School. So a very good friend of mine. And he is going strong. Young guy, you know, very fit. But it was heartbreaking to see him wait for the transplant to become available and the others that were on the list that were behind him and how long it took to get through that process. It was just heart-wrenching. So I too am a big supporter of organ donation. I'm actually, will be an organ donor myself. I guess it depends on my age, when those organs become available. I don't know how, even at this point, how valuable that would be. But regardless, you know, I want to encourage others to be part of the network of organ donation, because it's so critical to those that really need those transplants as they, you know, experience some medical difficulties. So thanks again for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you. And you bring up a good point, Commissioner Drehouse, as relates to age. Is there a age limit as it relates to donor organs?
Not for brain death donors. We really look at the overall health of the individual. So there's healthy 80-plus-year-olds and there's not-so-healthy 30-year-olds. So it's really, really dependent upon the health of the donor.
Okay, very good. Well, thank you both for being here. And we will make sure that you receive this and thank you for letting us know about it, which leads us into our next proclamation. You're welcome to stay on or you can get off if you'd like. But as we talk about minority health, I know there's a need, some hesitancy in the African-American community as it relates to donor donor organ donation. So could you speak to that just a little bit? Have you seen the level of African-American communities or even brown communities and what that percentage is as it relates to donor donations?
I don't have that exact percentage right in front of me, but I could tell you that it has been increasing, but it really relates, goes back to the level of distrust in the entire healthcare system with the community of color. So we try to dispel the myths associated with donation and hopefully we get more people to register. But that is one of the biggest things that we, one of our biggest challenges as we go forward is to help dispel the myths about donation.
Okay. Thank you both so much.
I really appreciate it.
Thank you for everything that you do. We appreciate it.
Thanks. So we'll move on to our next proclamation, which is Minority Health Month. And as I was saying, we purposely wanted to join this together, because I knew the difference in contributions as it relates to donating organs. So I'm going to go right into our April as Minority Health Month. And I'll just read some of it. And it says Booker T. Washington actually started this in 1915. He called it, he says, "Without health and until we reduce the high death rate, it would be impossible for us to have permanent success in business and property-getting and acquiring education or to show other evidence of progress." He launched the National Health Improvement Week in 1915. So whereas in 2002, the National Minority Health Month received support from the US Congress with a current concurrent resolution, a National Minority Health and Health Disparities Month. And it should be established to promote educational efforts on the health problems currently facing minorities and other health disparity populations. Whereas April is National Minority Health Month, a time to raise awareness about health disparities that continue to affect racial and ethnic minority populations and encourage action through health education, early detection and control of disease complications. And whereas the 2021 National Minority Health theme is hashtag vaccine-ready, the COVID-19 pandemic has disproportionately impacted racial and ethnic minority communities and underscores the need for those vulnerable communities to get vaccinated as more vaccines become available. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County, Ohio, does hereby recognize April as Minority Health Month and encourages our citizens to accept the challenge to the hashtag get out the vax. And be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County, Ohio, does hereby proclaim the month of April 2021 as Minority Health Month. And it is signed by all our Commissioners. And I will open it up for any of our Commissioners who have any comments. Vice President Alicia Reese.
Thank you, Madam President, and certainly happy to support this proclamation. Minority Health Month is critical. We all agree that there are health disparities that definitely exist. And we've seen those disparities exacerbated with COVID on top of it. That's why a lot of African-Americans who caught COVID, they had these other health disparities that kind of, in some regards, took some people all the way down. And so certainly the health disparities didn't begin with COVID. It won't end with COVID. And I'm happy that our Board is also looking to partner with this rollout of the one-stop bus that will continue to deal with trying to reduce these health disparities and partner with groups like the Health Gap and others on that. And I just want to say this past weekend, it was just great. One of the things I wanted to do was celebrate my birthday with Minority Health Month to get people moving again, because we're going to have to get people moving, get the heart rate going, get people out there. People were line dancing and doing things to kind of get the heart rate going and roller skating. But we're going to have to do these kinds of things as we tackle the health disparities. But I also want to say that as it relates to infant mortality, we're seeing the numbers going down. We're seeing, as we're targeting these things with the support of the County Commission and the Board and the different organizations that we partner with, as we start to tackle these things, we're seeing infant mortality rate go down. We're starting to see people living a little bit longer. So I'm happy to support the proclamation and continue to be committed to the work that's necessary to cut down those health disparities.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Drehouse?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I too want to give a big shout out to our community partners that help in this work. Very important work. There were, in fact, two health fairs on Saturday. One sponsored by Closing the Health Gap and the other one sponsored by Santa Maria, both of which targeted minority populations. And so we've got fantastic partners in the community, not only helping with COVID vaccination and testing, but also year after year after year encouraging people to practice good health. And so I just want to thank them for their work and I was happy to support the resolution.
Thank you. Thank you both. So we will move forward with public comments. Bridgette, I'm not sure if we have anyone that's in the queue to make comments.
Commissioner, let me check. I do not believe we have any public comment at this time.
Okay, thank you so much. So we'll move on to comments of our Commissioners. Vice President Reese, if you have any comments or motions.
Thank you, Madam President. Got a little bit of information that I wanted to make sure that I share. One of the things I wanted to talk about, restaurants and bars. Restaurant and bars in Hamilton County. The SBA is going to have $28.6 million, I believe, that will be available to restaurants and bars. It will be on first-come, first-served basis. However, that's why we want to get the information out to our people first. $28.6 billion, I want to go back, it's billion. And Monday will be the day that you can, the link will be live. But you could go to our website, 513relief.org right now to find out all of the information you need to know. How do you qualify? Who qualifies? They are actually going to open it up for some of the smaller businesses. So disadvantaged, smaller restaurants, they will have the first opportunity. And then they'll open it up to, you know, the chains and those kind of things. So I would just want people to get ready. Go on our website now, find out what you need to do, what you need to have, so that when it hits live at midnight on Monday, you're able to get in right away. We want to make sure that our restaurants and our bars are the ones that are able to get it. And I understand, not including the city of Cincinnati, we have over 2,300 restaurants. And I want to thank Commissioner Kestner, and he mentioned that yesterday. And working with Bridgette Dorchery and our team, we were able to send that link out to at least 2,300 restaurants and bars in Hamilton County, so that you're aware of it. Also, the Shutter Grant will be available. So if you have a museum or if you're a theater and you've been affected by COVID, they opened it up, but it crashed, it's reopened. So get back in if you haven't gotten back in, because certainly we've got some outstanding theaters and we want to make sure that we are the ones in Hamilton County that receive that money. So that's for Shutter Venue Operation Grants, and that's available now. The other thing that I wanted to make sure that people know about, and this is all on our website, 513relief.org or .com, Hamilton County, our Child Care Debt Relief Fund. So if you have past due childcare payments that is owed to a Hamilton County childcare provider, you have until Friday, this Friday, to apply for those funds, so that they can help you pay for your childcare. So these are things that we voted for and I just wanted people to know how to get them. As it relates to COVID, obviously, there are more places. We're opening it up, getting to more places that people can go. We still have our community clinics that people could get that off of our website. But we also have high schools that we've expanded. We were in high schools, now we've expanded. Everything from Benetown to North College Hill to Oak Hills, those locations are available on our website as well. And those are for students. Of course, the parent has to give consent, but they're available for students. And we also are expanding into the younger market, because the summer's here and people want to get out. And especially, you know, the younger people, they're ready to go, but we've got to make sure that you have access to the vaccine. So we're doing something different where we're not just waiting for you to come to us. I want to give a big shout out to Public Health. They're going to be at Kimwood Movies. And we're going to try to go. You go get your movie, go to the movie, you can also get vaccinated. So we're going to try those kind of things and come up with some new creative marketing ways. And certainly, hopefully, the bus will be ready to go in about two weeks, I'm hoping. And it can pull up to places like FC Games. It can pull up to places like the Dora locations, so we can begin to try to try some of those efforts. And then lastly, I just want to thank Linkaware. I want to thank John Martin, a CEO of The Symphony, and Katie Blackburn with the Bengals. I want to thank Woody from the National Underground Railroad Freedom Center, Kent Butts and Patty Collins, Bootsy Collins' wife, who co-chaired the Music Ambassadors. This week, we had a press conference and I'm looking forward to our Commission working together in administration of an idea of having, we already have, our icon is going to be opening up, the Andrew Brady Icon will be opening up. It's going to open up across the street from the Paul Brown Stadium. And Paul Brown Stadium hosts the Cincinnati Music Festival. And University of Cincinnati did an economic impact study and showed that the music festival is our number-one yearly economic driver in the region. Brings in over $107 million. So those are parking revenues, hotel tax revenues, sales tax revenues. They go into funds and it helps us fund other things. And a lot of the artists that perform over there, we're looking at how to, a lot of them are from Cincinnati or have Cincinnati roots or Cincinnati region roots. And so the thought is, how do we connect that corridor? Whether you have Paul Brown Stadium with the music festival, you have the Icon, Andrew Brady Icon Center that has announced, I think Machine Gun Kelly and some other groups already that's ready to go. And then connect it with a Walk of Fame, a music Walk of Fame that honors the African-American heritage of music. So you bring them all in together. You have a tourist attraction. We have economic money that comes in and now we expand it even bigger. And then inside the icon, they're going to have paraphernalia, I believe, from the Beatles and different groups. But now we have the Walk of Fame with it as well. We have a music corridor that could be a major tourism attraction for our side of the region. So I'm excited that this group is, you know, working together, black, white, Linkaware, who's been in music for over 40-plus years. And I really want to thank John Martin from The Symphony, who owns the facility. And Mike Smith has said, hey, this will be great, because it connects everybody, all of the music together with this. So looking forward to that in the future. But I just wanted to mention those things, Madam President. Those are some of the things that I've been working on. And hopefully those dates and times and locations will help some of the small businesses be able to take advantage of the things that our Board has voted on. And also, we got $4 million, Madam President. As you know, you and Commissioner Drehouse and myself, we voted on. Those dollars should be ready to go and announced pretty soon. And so it kind of will all come together to really help small businesses. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Drehouse?
Thank you, Madam President. So I just wanted to mention that yesterday was Workers Memorial Day. This is a day where we memorialize those who have lost their lives in the line of duty, no matter what kind of work they do. Oftentimes, it's an in-person celebration where we name out those individuals in the bell tolls. Obviously, that was not able to happen during COVID, but I didn't want the day to go unnoticed. And so just in recognition of those folks that, you know, work every day, work hard every day and some of whom lost their lives on the job. So I just wanted to make note of that, because that was yesterday and we didn't get a chance to celebrate in person. And that's all I've got.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, and I noticed that every month, there are more days recognized and so many things in so many months. That's certainly important. But, I mean, there are so many things, we can't possibly recognize them all, but we'll try to, you know, do the best we can. So the only thing I have today is just to let the public know that we're moving forward strategically as we look at the monies from the American Rescue Plan that's coming through to Hamilton County. We have stakeholders meetings, which are primarily businesses and agencies. And we definitely will be including the public as we look at where those monies should go, because the monies are for you. And so we have to make sure that those monies go directly to you and not, you know, we have the ability to do infrastructure. We have the ability to do lots of other things with those direct monies and needs that come forth from our people. We need to do that also and not forget the infrastructure and things like that. So we're working strategically on that. Not only that, our budget is coming up. And we're going to be doing a lot of discussion as it relates to our budget. We've already started it. And as I was saying, any information you have to bring forward to Jeff by June the 1st, please do that. So we're moving forward and we'll talk more about our budget and where we are at a later date. And that's all that I have. I will go to Jeff Aludar, our County Administrator.
Thank you, Madam President. I have just one quick comment and then one by leave. As a comment, I just wanted to tag on to the discussion from Tuesday at staff meeting. Ralph Linney, our Facilities Director, was here talking about many of the energy improvements that County Facilities has undertaken and how that has led to cost savings, et cetera. And I just want to acknowledge the Facilities Department in general. As the Board is aware, as we've gone through COVID, we have had to make lots of different improvements to our buildings. Not only have those energy improvements been done and we continue right now to construct some energy improvements in our buildings, but there's been a lot of work done to make our buildings safe for the time when, hopefully, very shortly here, the public and employees will be returning en masse to our building. And not the least of which is a project that's going on right now to refresh and renovate the boardroom, where the Board entertains the public on a regular basis for your legislative meetings. And I just want to thank John Gilbert, who is the Building Manager here in this building, John Nestor, who's the Project Manager, and all the Trades Employees who are involved with that project. They're doing a great job and I just want to make sure that they receive some recognition for all that work. And as always, Ralph and Tony Matre over there in County Facilities, who lead that part of the ship. So with that, Commissioners, I do have one by leave item today. This is listed as by leave item one in your packet. This relates to an amendment with our subrecipient agreement with United Way of Cincinnati. This essentially amends our agreement with United Way to allow them to serve as that single point of entry for residents requiring navigational assistance related to needs of the pandemic, whether it is rental assistance, whether it is food assistance, whether it is lack of understanding on where to go for vaccine or testing. We thought it was very important to make sure that there was one central access point to that and that we wanted to use 211 and the United Way as that central access point. So the Board approved an amendment to the broader CARES Act plan back in March. This is the amendment to the agreement to allow United Way to move forward with that. This does not include something that will be coming forward later, and that is some specific technical assistance primarily around the small business assistance programs. But this does include that United Way's ability to manage that single point of access for all other resident inquiries. I know Moira Weir is here on the line. I would defer to Moira if there's any things that she would like to say specifically on it or certainly any Board questions related to it.
Oh, good afternoon, Commissioners. No, we're just really excited. Thank you for the opportunity. It just gives us a way to continue the great quick care coordination that we've been doing and making sure we're connecting residents and they're able to talk to a live voice. We've been very committed. If they don't even get a live voice, that we make a return call back within 24 hours. And as you all know, rental assistance, mortgage assistance, utility assistance, childcare, you know, the access to the vaccines, those are all really critical components of the work that we're doing. So we are just thrilled to have the opportunity and looking forward to continuing it.
Thank you. I'll open it up for my colleagues, Vice President Alicia Reese. You have any comments?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. And certainly, I support this and supported it when we said, what do we need to do next? I think one of the things that's so critical, we have the money and we have put the money forward. But that one piece that was missing was that people call who had never had to access county service or county health and they just didn't know, you know, who to call, where to go. And we also had a chance to pilot something like this. I want to thank Moira and her team. We piloted during the relief-a-thon. And that was two hours and it was only two hours. But what I liked about it, we helped over 700 people and people got the call back. But what I liked most about it, Madam President, is that we got a report to say this is the people here who got a call back and what percentage were the calls for. And the highest percentage was rental assistance. Second highest, obviously, was small business. But we kind of get it, that gave us a sense of kind of what were the questions, what did people need. And then also that night, Moira and her team was able to get people connected to the Talbot House, who has a hotline for people who might have a mental issue. and might be on the edge right then, because people have so much going on. And I was told three people, you know, lives were saved that night because they connected them with the Talbot House and they were able to talk to them and tell them how important it was to continue with their life. So I'm excited about this because it gives us a chance to see reports kind of like what we voted on and kind of see how we've been able to help people and really where the questions and the needs are. So excited for them to get started.
Thank you. Commissioner Dreehouse.
Thanks, Madam President. Hello, Moira. It's good to see you. Yeah, I just want to thank United Way for the partnership. You guys, you know, when we need something and reach out to United Way, the answer is always yes. You know, and remember, in the last round of funding, we had a need come forward for people that had tested positive, that had to isolate, and they didn't have access to food or support. And we had to figure out a way to provide that and went to United Way and said, hey, you know, what do you guys think? And Moira immediately stood up the program, and we were able to help people that didn't have that support system in this community to help them during that isolation period. So that was kind of the beginning, which is, you know, is still happening. And then, you know, with folks trying to access vaccine, you know, there were many in this community that either don't have access to a computer or just not comfortable using it to do that kind of sign up. And so 211 was established to help with that. It already existed, but we added on to that. And people were so grateful, especially seniors, that they could get ahold of somebody and help some, you know, have some help navigating how to get that shot. And now we've got additional services related to navigating the services that are being provided, both through the county and otherwise, and more to come, because we've got another tranche of money coming forward. So, Moira, I just want to thank you and your team for your 24/7 work and trying to partner with us to help folks in this community that need it the most. It's really most appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. And Moira, it's always great to see you and all the great things, not just with us, but all the other things that you're doing at United Way. I just thank you so much. And do you walk on water? No, no, you don't. But I know you must feel great when you go to sleep at night for all the things that you and your team are doing. And you did great things in Hamilton County, JFS, and now even greater things there. So thank you so much for all that you do.
Thank you all. And thank you, commissioners. We're really excited about the partnership. So thanks for the opportunity. It's nice to see you all.
Yeah, good to see you. So at this point, I'd like to make a motion to adopt by leave one.
Thank you.
Commissioner Summaradumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Good seeing you.
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners. And that completes my comments and by leaves.
Thank you, Jeff, so much. We'll move on to our regular agenda items. And Mr. Beck is here with some items for us.
Good afternoon, commissioners. We have three items today. The first one is a resolution setting a hearing date for the consideration of projects for funding for the 2021 municipal road fund. And we're recommending the hearing date for May 27.
Any questions or comments, Vice President Reese?
Uh, no, no questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
No questions.
Like to make a motion to adopt the date of May the 27th for the hearing.
Thank you.
Commissioner Summaradumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Thank you. Item two.
Item two is a resolution awarding a contract to lowest and best bidder Barrett paving materials for the 2020 Reservicing Program Phase Two for roads in Anderson, Green, and Sycamore Township. Barrett's low bid was $1,496,340. That was under the engineer's estimate. And those funds are coming from Permissive Auto and Road and Bridge Fund.
Thank you so much. Any questions or comments, Vice President Reese?
Yeah, just one comment, one question, rather. And I certainly do support this for green Sycamore Townships and Anderson Townships. When will we hear about the additional funds? Because I understand, Mr. Beck, we could do more with the SORTA funds. When will that?
Yeah, currently, SORTA, the transit tax fund, SORTA has put out a call for projects on those with a due date for applications. I believe it's the end of June. And they will review those projects in July and August and make recommendations to the SORTA Board in September and bring those recommendations to the District Two Integrating Committee in October. So those funds will be available, my understanding from SORTA, in the first of the year. For projects starting the first of the year.
Great. I just wanted to see that because in addition to the Western Hills Viaduct, certainly want to make sure that the, you know, we're able to do the villages, the townships. And we should be able to, you know, do more and have an overlay to show that we have repaved more area, more laid miles, I guess, as you call it. And so certainly wanted to just make sure we knew that those were coming and we're able to get a full report of everything that will be able to, will be.
Yes, and all the communities should know that SORTA has that information on their website now, has all the requirements for the application so that those are available to the public right now.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yeah, thanks, Madam President. Thank you, Eric, for the report. Yeah, I was going to mention that, you know, there's a lot of conversation about infrastructure, especially at the national level right now. And I was going to highlight that we're doing more than ever in Hamilton County related to infrastructure work because of the increased fee. It's a bit of a user's fee that was to help fund the viaduct and some of these roads and bridge projects in the county. And so I did want to highlight that. That was a few years ago. But we're hearing a lot about infrastructure and partnership, and I am very hopeful that we'll continue to have those partnerships. But locally, we stepped up, and this is a reflection of that. So I just wanted to thank you, Eric, for moving these projects forward.
Sure, and that's a great point. We have, for the Western Hills Viaduct that was brought up, we have applied for several grants here recently. Infra grant and the track grant. Both of those, we have stressed the point that the commissioners passed a additional license plate fee and that we've passed additional gas tax to create revenue to help fund this. So we are stressing that point in all our grant applications.
Fingers crossed about that funding.
Yes.
Okay, thank you both. I have no comments as it relates to item two. I'd like to make a motion to adopt item two.
Thank you.
Commissioner Summaradumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Thank you. Item three?
Okay, thank you. Item three is a resolution awarding a contract to lowest and best bidder to WG Stang for the New Haven Road Improvements located in Crosby Township. Low bid was $442,586. It's a little bit over our engineer's estimate, but within the requirements. There are no county funds involved in this. This is being paid by the school district.
Great. Vice President Reese, any comments?
No.
Thank you. Commissioner Dreehouse?
No questions.
Well, like when you say no county money involved, so.
It's the best kind, yeah.
Yeah, when you say that. So I'd like to make a motion to adopt item three.
Thank you.
Commissioner Summaradumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Eric. You can stay on if you'd like.
Okay, thank you.
So we're going to move forward to our consent items. We have a few. Before we vote on those, I'd like to make just a little summary. Items four through nine, we're looking at hopefully adopting. But the ones that we want to adopt is a contract for adult probation. There are grants for the sheriff's office and River City Correctional Facility. And then two JFS agreements for group services. And then one agreement for substance abuse screenings and one agreement for residential treatment for JFS. And the ones that we want to accept into the record are items 10, is item 10, which is five liquor licenses. There is no objection by the sheriff department. I'd like to open it up for Vice President Reese, if you have any comments or questions.
No, no questions.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yeah, I apologize to the administrator for not asking this earlier. On item number five, the grants for the River City Correctional. Jeff, can you illuminate on that a little bit? I'm sorry, I didn't dig into this one, but where are the grants coming from?
The, that's, the River City Correctional Facility is a state grant, I believe. The, so there's two grants. There's one for the River City Correctional Institute, which is a, I believe, an adult education grant. It's a small grant, I think around $500. I think it is from state sources. The other grant, I believe, Madam Commissioner, is a federal grant, and it is for the sheriff's office specifically for traffic enforcement related to drugged and other impaired drivers.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Was there a reason, Jeff, why it was combined?
The budget adjustments are typically combined that way, just for efficiencies sake.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
If there are no more questions or comments, I'd like to make a motion to adopt items four through nine and to accept for the record item number 10.
Thank you.
Commissioner Summaradumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Thank you very much. And we have before us two executive sessions. I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session for item one, executive session pursuant to RC Section 121.22G3 to conduct a conference with an attorney for the public body concerning MSD. And the second executive session is pursuant to RC Section 121.22G3 to conduct a conference with an attorney for the public body concerning disputes involving the public body that are the subject of pending or imminent court action. Is there a second?
Thank you.
Commissioner Summaradumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Thank you.